Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our border sanitation meeting for Monday, March the 4th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each-
Existing storm sewer in Ninth Avenue. In the Woodmont Court area, there's some standing water in the court on the pavement, and we would be putting in a new inlet and connecting to an existing inlet and storm sewer in the court. And then along Andrea Drive, that's- there's a creek in the backyards there, and we are doing some bank stabilization where there's some erosion happening right now. So that would just be repairing the erosion in that- in those backyards and that creek.
Of the three projects, what do you think the most impo- the biggest problem is?
I think that the erosion is one of the biggest problems because we- when we were out there observing it, it looked like it was actively eroding, and there are some utilities up in those yards that would be exposed if the erosion got back far enough.
Dave, you have any questions?
Yeah. Where's the creek at on Andrea Drive?
So it's McFarland Creek in the backyards. It's east of Yazoo-
It's between Andrea and Dangerfield. The house is on Dangerfield and Andrea, but up to it.
Okay, that's north of where I'm thinking, okay. Okay. No, I don't have any other thing, that's it.
Or anything else? Emily?
That's all I have.
Having said that, Dave, I'll ask for a motion to approve allow- to allow Wesler to seek quotes for this project.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well and the motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. Next up, retirement within DPW. Brad?
I'm going to read a letter from John Biggs for his retirement from the Department of Public Works. Dear Board, I'm writing to inform you of my retirement from the City of Beech Grove. My last working day will be March 29th, 2019. Excuse me. My hire date was January 15th, 1990. Started out working on the back of the trash truck. After the first two years of employment, I was offered a chance to move over to the street department, which I worked 21 years. Six years ago, I was given the opportunity to be the street commissioner, which I greatly appreciated this advancement within the department. I would like to request my vacation time of 29 days, sick time of 519 hours and five- 519.5 hours, along with two personal days to be paid out on the date of retirement. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns regarding my retirement from employment with the City of Beech Grove. Sincerely, John A. Biggs.
Does he- he doesn't- he- is he eligible for compensatory time?
No.
Okay. All right. I, uh, I haven't had a chance to talk to John personally about it, but I- I wish him the best, but I kind of wish he'd take a step back and think about this. He's a really good employee and he does a lot of work for the city and- and I just think that, you know, I'll abide by his wish, but I- we talked to- Dan and I talked about it a little bit before the meeting. I- sometimes it's best to take a step back, but in this case, Dave, do you have any comments on it?
No. How old is John?
Think he'll be- well, I think he just turned 57. So I think mathematically, he's just passed when he can retire, the 85, 29 years, and I think he just turned 57, so.
You know, we- we lose a lot of experience when guys like this retire, so.
Yeah.
But anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had a few long talks, him and I, and I certainly communicated that he would be missed, and I appreciated his work ethic and that, you know, it certainly isn't anything on our end as to why he would want- be leaving, you know, that it would just be a personal decision on his end. My wish is that he would stick around, but he, I think, is ready for the next chapter in his life, and that's- he- I've met with him a couple times to give him a little time and even set on this for at least a week before I brought it forth to you. So that's- seems to be what he has his, I guess, his heart set for is to go that direction.
I think the payment would be up to the clerk and how they want to work that out, but.
Yeah, I sent Dan an email today with some numbers because I think he's one of the first people, maybe, that we've dealt with with the new percentages where he gets an increased percentage of that sick time, and I haven't dealt with this yet as far as how it gets paid out, so I just sent Dan the numbers and asked him however he wanted to pay it out. I would submit it, you know, in that way.
Yeah, I think he's at 68% instead of 50% on the buyback. You know, it's quite a large number.
Right.
And so I don't know if he wants that spread out a little further. It says payment at time of retirement, which I have no issue with. That's his choice. He's just going to get hit harder on taxes, so.
Right.
We'll work with him, and I'm sure he'll come in and see me before time, but, you know, it's, uh, I just want it to work out best for him.
Sure.
Dave, any other comment?
No. What's the 68% of, though?
We- it used to be when you re- when you retired and you had sick day buyback, we would buy back half of your sick days, 50%.
Okay.
The new policy would be, once you reach 20 years, and then every year-
Within Marion and surrounding counties. I spoke to Gary about this when he came in and we did par- partial chief interview and advised him part of the condition of coming on to Beech Grove was to attend a firefighter recruit class. Gary was actually very excited about doing so. At that time, I told him start working out and doing aerobics because it's a very tough process. It's a very tough and challenging class, but I don't anticipate Gary to have any issues with the recruit class itself, and I appreciate him stepping up and saying, "Yeah, I'm looking forward to it."
And this is- the money's there, right? Yes, because we'll replace another firefighter. The only question would be, does he still have signed the paper for the three years if we send him to recruit class?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
With- with that, if anything happens during recruit class and it's the city's position to terminate employee, he's not required to pay that money back. But if he decides to leave and take employment in another location-
Is it three years or one year?
It's, uh, three years.
Okay. I thought it was one year. Okay. And he's through Perth and everything?
Um, his paperwork is complete. Is sitting down at Perth with Gary being a transfer from another department and passing public safety medical and the psychological exam. It's a very quick process, and I would anticipate getting approval back within the next week.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Chief?
Um, no, not this time.
Dave asks for a motion to approve the hiring of Gary Wayne Harden III.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Congratulations, Gary. You want to say anything?
I appreciate the opportunity. Big opportunity for me and my family. Very good, excited.
Married, children?
Single.
Single.
Going to college.
Good for you. Are you originally from Batesville?
I'm from Arlen, Indiana. I'm a grandson, and I got on Batesville full-time here first last year.
Okay. Well, good for you. We wish you the best.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Last order is request to hire PAO Police Department Chief.
Dear Mayor and Board, I'm requesting to hire Catherine Cox as a part-time PAO. She has some needed training to do the job, but she will still need additional training to do what we require for the PAO position. She'll be assigned to weekends and fill in positions as needed. She'll be trained by Beth, who is an IDECs coordinator and has that experience. She'll be paid 1450 per hour, and there is money in the budget if she's approved to be hired. She's retiring from the Sheriff's Department, their dispatch, and she's not certain when she wants to start. She believes it's going to be in April, so when she tells us, I'll send her into the clerk's office to fill out her paperwork.
I was wondering if she was coming from downtown.
Yes.
This name's not familiar.
She is an entry person now for dispatch, but she's not a full operator, and that's what we're need her to be, to do that PAO position.
Did you say there's money available for this?
Yes.
Okay. Is this a replacement or additional?
No, it's- it's- we have-
Just in case you need somebody.
Right. We have so many hours to fill and it's- there's a lot amount of money and only so much can be used up and.
Does she have to be certified as a IDECs coordinator, or is she just-
She has to be certified as an IDECs operator.
Okay.
And right now, she just does entries, and Beth will train her and get her certified as an operator, full operator.
So if you're a P-?
PAO.
PAO over here at the police department, you have to be IDECs certified?
Yes, that's what we want, so that they can make entries 24 hours a day or during the weekends and to- we have an agreement with IMPD to do it.
Okay.
But we want to be able to do ours and control ours as much as possible.
Okay. Dave, any comments?
No, sir.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's request to hire Catherine Cox as a part-time PAO.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
That concludes new business. Comments from board members?
I have nothing.
Uh, no comments? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I second. The meeting is adjourned at 6:24 PM. We will convene our common council meeting this evening at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. At this time, we will convene our city council meeting for Monday, March the 4th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves beginning on my left.
Lady Templin, Councilman-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Vida Mascari, Council, District 2.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council, District 1.
Chris Duffer, Council, District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have several special presentations this evening, but before we start, I wanted to read an obituary for Leon Woolfington. Mr. Woolfington was a city council member here and was also on the school board. So Mr. Woolfington died Sunday, February 24th, 2019, of natural causes in Charlotte, North Carolina, in hospice care for the past two weeks prior to his death. Mr. Woolfington died peacefully at his sleep. Born in Beech Grove, Indiana, January 17th, 2000- or 1926. He graduated from Beech Grove High School in 1944, attended Indiana University, and graduated in 1950. Mr. Woolfington, long known for his positive outlook on life and his sense of humor. Mr. Woolfington served on the Beech Grove City Council, Beech Grove Board of Education, Beech Grove J.C.'s, Beech Grove Lions Club, and many other civic organizations. And they had a private memorial service was held at his daughter's home in Mint Hill, North Carolina. So we wanted to recognize him for his service on the council, so if we could have a moment of silence for him, please. Thank you. First special presentation is the youth council, our principal at the high school. Liz.
Happy March, though that's surprising with the weather. Just a few things to announce before the fantastic news that Garrett Daniel just walked in with. Our spring parent-teacher conferences were a great success. We appreciate all of our parents who joined us to discuss their student work. We tested iStep last week and this week. We had to move the ACT to March 12th because of a two-hour delay that we had the day that was scheduled a while back. Our skills service day is coming up. That'll be Wednesday, April 17th, and we'll see you guys again in 1st of April, but I wanted to mention that. And spring break is coming up in two weeks. Our first day back will be Monday, April 1st. No April fools there. Our cheerleaders competed in Monrovia, did very, very well. Our choir has done two competitions so far. Nine of our students traveled to the ISMA State Solo and Ensemble Festival. Of those nine, seven were awarded gold, two of which were also recognized with distinction. And then a few weeks ago, Jubileers and Alon Show Choirs both traveled to Franklin Central in the Show Choir Classic, and they received first and second runner-up honors. Two students did, and then the groups received best choreography and first runner-up honors. So our choir is doing quite well, and I will turn it over to Mr. Daniel with some fantastic news from this past weekend.
Good evening. I'm going to first actually start off with some other sports recaps. The boys swim team finished up their season about mid-February when they advanced a couple swimmers to sectional finals on Saturday, but we put- once again, we compete a very strong sectional swim meet, so- but Coach Mazur was very pleased with their efforts this year and how the season ended up under her first year. Another thing that we do at the high school is our fourth year in a row now, champions together. It's a inclusion program where we have athletes of all ability levels compete and play together. So our team this year got a chance to actually practice with the varsity team this year. Then we actually, for something different, was we played against Triton Central's inclusion team. So they brought their team. We got a chance to meet and greet with them the night of the game. We played a game together, which is, I don't know if you've ever been to it before, but it's a lot of cheering, a lot of yelling and stuff like that for the kids who are playing in it. And then after the game, they got a chance to eat pizza and kind of hang out. So it was good. And part of also that is, the champions together thing is to, we have an inclusion game. We promote something at school, which our promotion is to spread the word to end the word. So we have our students sign off on that at the high school. And then we also raised close to $5,000 for Special Olympics Indiana, and part of that, you know, the end part of that is the polar plunge, which myself, Dr. Kaiser, Mrs. Walters, and some students participated in this past Friday. Mrs. Walters, I had to kind of trick her into going, but I think at the end part, she really enjoyed it. But we basically start on Eagle Creek Beach, and we run into the freezing cold water as students and faculty together, and it's just a way to kind of raise awareness and raise money, too. It's a lot of fun. The last but not least certainly is, this past weekend, we competed in sectional 28, and we won it, which is awesome. First time in 11 years at Beech Grove as boys basketball's won a sectional. And I'm going to pass it over to one of the players, Gavin Hess, to talk about the experience.
Hi, I'm Gavin Hess. As Coach Daniel said, we played in the sectional championship this weekend. Before that, we beat Indian Creek and Heron, and last Saturday, we played Manuel in the sectional championship game. It was a pretty exciting thing. We had a great show out. A bunch of the community members, and we had a fan bus that went out to the game, so there's a lot of kids from the school out there. We beat Manuel 48 to 45, and the fans stormed the court, a bunch of people there taking pictures, and it was just a great thing for the community. Most of you guys know, the passing of Coach English, it meant a lot to the whole basketball team and the whole community. So I wish he could have been here to seen us win the sectional, but it felt great to win the sectional for him and the whole community.
So along with winning a sectional, actually comes a lot of work preparing for regionals. So I actually came sprinting here from the high school to make sure I got here on time, but just to sprint, a quick bit of information for that, we're playing on Saturday at Greencastle High School, and we'll be playing the first game, which is at 10:00 AM in the morning. We'll be doing pre-sell tickets at the high school until Friday at noon, so you can pick them up during the school day. On Wednesday, we'll be selling them from 5:30 to 7:30 after school for those people that worked in the day and can't make it exactly. $10 tickets, it gets you in for both sessions, both the morning session and the night session. If you just want to go to the Greencastle that morning, you can buy a $7.01 session ticket, or you can also buy the $10.02 session ticket, which gets you both in morning and night again. We're also selling sectional championship T-shirts. It's a very quick sell, just so we can turn them around fast enough for people to wear to the game on Saturday. We're taking- I have brought some extra forms for you tonight, and I'll leave some copies with someone here. They can disperse if you guys are interested in purchasing a shirt. But we're basically ending the sales tomorrow at 3:30 so that we can get those turned around in time. It's preorder only. It's $12 for a shirt. And then other than that, just hope to guys, see you guys out there on Saturday. Support us at Greencastle. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask Gavin a question?
Yes.
Gavin, I- I tell these guys every game that I'm there and I bring them the scores, and I got to say, the Southport game, I thought was one of the best games I've ever seen. But I'll tell you what, you guys topped it Saturday night. That was a hell of a comeback, and you made a heck of a good three-point shot. I loved it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Liz and Garrett, and obviously, good luck this Saturday morning. Next up is special recognition of the 7th and 8th grade football team for the middle school. So at this time, I'm going to call up their coach, Roy Edwards, to introduce the players and talk about the 8th grade team and the 7th grade team, who both won their conference. But the 7th grade did something pretty exceptional, so, Coach, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you. One of my assistants right here is Jeff Storey also. I know it's a little late. Our season's been over, been over for a while. I appreciate the mayor calling and asking us to come up. 8th grade won conference last year and this year. They'll be going to the high school. We got a good group of boys. I'll let them introduce themselves and what grade you're in, guys, okay? Step right up.
I'm Josh Webb, and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Ralph Shaw, I'm in 7th grade.
Mark Stone, and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Jonathan Brewer, and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Julius Florence, and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Ian Thompson, and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Jack Broadwell, and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is David Sims, and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Jackson Bowler, and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Aiden Crowley, and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is- my name is Octavia Smith, I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Ethan Thompson, and I'm at 8th grade.
My name is Adonis Adams, and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Eric Freeman, I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Aaron Freeman, I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Gavin Mims, and I'm in 7th grade.
And that's a few of our guys. We had several that couldn't be here. Okay, appreciate it. Now, our 7th grade, they were undefeated this year, and we stayed unbeaten all the way up to the last game, and we go to Indian Creek, and about halfway through that game, we give up six points. So I think they did really well to go a whole season, only giving up one score, and we got- we got some good kids going to be going up to the high school.
Coach Roy, I think they enjoy the football better than they have to come to this mic.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
On behalf of the city, this is congratulations to the Beech Grove 8th grade boys' football team, Middle Indiana Crossroads Conference Champions.
Thank you.
And this- this one is congratulations Beech Grove 7th grade boys' football team, 2018, 2019, Middle Indiana Crossroads Conference Champions. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
I didn't want to hear all the speeches. I'm going to ring them up. Evidently. We were horrible. 3 and 5. 3 and 8.
to come back in front of us and give us an update on where- what they're doing and some of the programs that they are presenting to our community. And here tonight is Diana Hendricks. Diana, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm with a suitcase. I really haven't been in front of you too much to talk about the coalition, and I think, Dennis, did you get the trifles in their packets? And I don't know if all of you have had a chance to look at it really well. I know Elizabeth was on it with us from time to time, doing things with us, but I want to just explain a little bit about who we are and anybody in the audience. Also, would like to take a look at them if I didn't get enough. I've got some here. So just a little bit about who we are. We are basically a prevention or coalition, and it's more for youth substance misuse prevention. So what we're looking at is getting programs out there, one for the youth and another for the public. So we're looking at different domains in which we're covering. So we're covering individual, family, peer, school, and community domains. We're looking at risk factors and protective factors that will actually help keep substances out of the hands of our youth and give them a better future in growing up free of drugs and possibly keep from turning to alcohol or whatever so much. So that's basically what we're out to do. So what are some of the things that we are doing? When you take a look at our trifold, in the center is some of our partners. You'll see we've got the hospitals in here with us. We have law enforcement, we have religious and fraternal, we have civic volunteer groups, we have youth-serving groups, we have state substance prevention groups. We are just an organization of many people coming together for the purpose of putting prevention programs in place for our youth. On the back, we wanted to set this up where if somebody grabbed this and they needed assistance, on the back, we have a whole list of crisis hotlines. If somebody were to just walk up and pick this up and they needed help, we've got the military, Spanish, LGBTQ. We have a texting hotline on here because a lot of people don't like to talk, so we found a texting hotline. Mental Health Association. This is what I just gave them. You can pass this around if you guys want to keep a copy. I don't know that I've got enough for everybody to have one. So anyway, I just want to explain a little bit of our programs that we're doing, and I'll just start. This is a Gantt chart. This is what we work off. This has our whole year on it of the different programs that we're going to be doing. I'm going to go down it really quickly. So I just explained the flyers. If anyone wants to come to any of our coalition meetings, we meet monthly, the 4th Tuesday of every month, from 5:00 to 6:30, we are at the Hornet Park Community Center, and we welcome any community members that want to come in if you want to help us. That's wonderful. We appreciate that with the programs. We have quite a few that we've been putting on. We've gotten a lot of grants to run. a lot of grants to run, programs to educate, and to bring awareness about prevention. So, some of our events that we're, that we're doing, one of them is going to be in March, we're gonna do the Beach Grove Greater Chamber of Commerce, we're gonna do their community fair. One of the things that we look at handing out, and we're trying to get out to the public, has anyone seen these? These are the Detera and their drug deactivation system. The local police station has that box in their lobby that you can go in and put medications into. We have these now that we can hand out. And it holds forty-eight pills, six ounces of liquid, or six patches, you fill it with water, once you put everything in it, and instructions are in the back. And then, after you put the water in, you just toss it in the garbage, and then it deactivates all the chemicals in it, as well as it is biodegradable as well. So, it actually gets rid of itself, so we don't have to worry about it hooking up our... So, we try to be as friendly environmentally, probably as possible. And if you notice also with our flyers that I handed out with our trifold, we also do the same thing with our events. So, we're gonna talk about those in a minute, too. We set them up on eight-and-a-half by eleven sheets, where that we could cut them in thirds, and we can stick them right in our trifold. So, one, we're saving paper, and then the other one is, we're making it easy for people to be able to carry whatever they need to carry. So, then, our next one that we do is National Prevention Week. National Prevention Week is a big deal for us. SAMSA, does everybody know who SAMSA is in here, or have heard of them? Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. They are our national organization that the hospitals and everybody turns to for mental health and substance abuse regulations and guidelines and policy. And they're the ones who set up National Prevention Week. It is going to be, it's always in May, and this year, it's May twelfth to eighteenth. So, we thought, while we have National Prevention Week, if you look in your folder, we put on this program, we get a grant for. So, our youth substance misuse and overdose prevention is paid for by grants, so it's a free event for the community to come to. So, we decided to put this program during National Prevention Week on Wednesday. It's gonna be at the library, it's gonna be upstairs, if anyone's been in our library, which most of you I'm sure have, it's gonna be upstairs. And then on Saturday, we do something with the youth. We do rock painting. And has everyone heard about the Friendship Rock Painting? We put our Facebook addresses on the back, and then we let them paint the rocks, and then they hide them, and other people find, other kids find them, get pictures of them, put them on Facebook. That leads parents to our Facebook page, and our Facebook page that has information on it about prevention. So, they go looking for their kids to see if someone found their kiddo's rocks, and then they're able to learn a little bit more about prevention. So, National Prevention Week is important to us, because it does signify what we're out to do. So, stop by the library in May, they're gonna give us the display case in the library, where we can decorate it, and we're gonna advertise about the two events we have coming up. Mark your calendars for those. Then, we do back-to-school nights, so that we can disseminate the information about prevention. The Fall Festival, we were in the parade, who was in the parade and saw us walk along with our recovery sign with the balloon arch and everything. It was great fun. And then we had a booth where we also disseminated out information as well. And then, that one is in September. So, for fundraisers, Beach Grove City Schools needed to have some programs for substance prevention in them. So, we got a hold of a grant called Prevention Matters, and got with the school system about it, worked with the school system to help them write the grant, and then also to help them do program selection. So, now, I'm really happy to say, Beach Grove City Schools Ninth Grade has Too Good for Drugs and Violence. That's not just a program that you go to for one day, like we go in and, no, this is a curriculum. It's play, the teachers in ninth grade are teaching it along with the curriculum to the students. Then we had Bafins, our life skills for the grade school. That was the same way. It's put into the school and with the kids, so it's being taught in with their curriculum as well. Well, we helped them, be able to get them into the school. Now, we need to be able to help support them, because the workbooks for the teachers and the youth are very expensive. So, we hold fundraisers. How many saw us on Facebook, on the community pages, the White Castle, where they were doing a fundraiser for us? So, White Castle has asked us to come in every quarter, and they'll do an onsite fundraiser and give us fifteen percent of their sales. So, we are doing that to help raise funds to support those programs now that are in the school system. Not only that, we're also going in and backing up those programs that we have in the school system with other programs, just to ensure that it's kind of sinking in with the kids. So, they'll go maybe a semester, or we might come in and, and do something that's fun with the kids, just to get that to sink in what they had already learned. So, we're really trying to help the youth be able to realize how bad it is when they're young, picking up and misusing substances. Then, we have our promoters, the Beach Grove, July third, we had a big food basket, and I don't know if any of you were there and bought tickets from us, we sell them for a dollar. The food basket is two hundred and fifty dollars worth of food. So, that's another way we raise funds. Last year, on that food basket, we raised, and selling raffle tickets, I think it was five hundred dollars. So, we're gonna try to double it, but it's two hundred and fifty dollars. So, Texas Roadhouse gave us a fifty-dollar gift card, Edrow Number One, Dell's, Dairy Queen gave us two twenty-five. So, it's like all these restaurants are really receptive to this, because they're finding used syringes in their bathrooms. And then they've also got people who work for them that are doing drugs. And so, they're really liking the idea of these programs in the community, because it's gonna help them hopefully be able to get those out of their bathrooms, because that's a safety issue. What if somebody goes in there, and they take a kid in there, and they get stuck with it, because it's in a corner? There's all kinds of things that could happen with those. And let me ask you, if you guys find a syringe someplace, you know what to do with it? You wanna tell them what to do with it? Did they find it?
Sharp's container.
The Sharp's container, police department will dispose of it, or leave the fire department to it.
Or they could call you if they are feeling unsafe about it.
Call the police, yes.
Call the police, they'll come and get it, too. Yeah. So, you gotta worry sometimes about what might be on those, so just be cautious if you're handling them. Then, with that one, that's another fundraiser to help raise funds to support the schools. Then, we have the, we have the White Castles, like I said, every quarter. Then we look at our community interventions. We're starting now to get into the point, we've been around, August eighth was our year, so this August eighth will be two years old, and we're excited about that. We finally got our horse in front of our cart. Our cart was so far ahead of our horse, it was running to catch up. So, now we're finally in order, and we've got something to work off of. And so, anyway, we're looking at intervention programs. So, one's called Toilet, the National Toilet Talks Campaign. Anyone ever hear that? Toilet Talks Campaign? Have you ever gone into a public restroom and sat down, and then they have a plastic sleeve that magnets to the door that has information in it? That's a Toilet Talks type campaign. So, they have the information there that you could read while you're actually in the bathroom, get your attention. So, we're going to set up two. The youth at the school system is working on theirs, that will go in their school system, and we're gonna be talking with Franklin Township and a couple of the other local schools to get them in there as well. And then, our Coalition itself is putting together ours, which we will put out in the local restaurants, or gas stations, wherever we can find to put them behind doors, and just give people information about substance misuse, and maybe even have some of these numbers, on the back, the crisis numbers. Then, we're also looking, the Detera, Detera Drug Program. If anybody wants any of these before you leave, I didn't bring a great deal of them, we've got some downstairs, we've got some stored here. We've got eight hundred of these, and I'm trying to get a thousand more, because right now, there's a grant out where we were able to get these for free. These are actually eighteen dollars for three bags. So, they're quite costly little things. And so, if we can get them for free right now, as many as we can get, we'd love to have, because we're giving these out at almost every event we go to. And all that's basically in these bags, I'll open this one, and if whoever takes this one, they'll just go, it's already opened. It's just a charcoal bag, that's all it is. And then you put your drugs, it'll tell you instructions back here, what to do. You just put them in there, and then you just seal it up and toss it. So, if anybody wants one of those, you've got extra medications laying around, why do we do that? Because you have medications that you didn't use or finish up, and they're in your medicine cabinet, and you get somebody who comes over, and they just decide they're gonna take your medication. And to prevent that from happening, you just don't know what that could cause for them. They could be on medications that that would give a reaction to, or maybe they're just having problems, and they decided that they just wanna turn to drugs or something. So, to prevent that, we do this, and also, if you don't have these, the police station has that drop box for it also. And what do you put in that, Mark, in the drop box? You don't take liquids, right?
An over-the-counter. We don't want any syringes in there, hopefully not any liquids.
And if there is liquids, if they have them, do they bring them in, or is there someplace else they could put them?
We're disposed of them. Because they could be opened easily, or break.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's a nice thing to have in the community, not all communities have that. And so, anyway, the programs that we're doing, I, like I said, I'd get back to this one. This youth substance misuse overdose prevention, we do a National Prevention Week. This is a really good program. We give you the latest facts and trends that are going on with youth. Does anybody know about the little flash drives now? The youth are getting the flash drives and loading them with drugs. And they can pass that around and sell that in school, or at your home, or whatever. There's all kinds of little crafty ways now to be able to be dealing with drugs. And so, we didn't know all of this. And so, now, Health Ed Pros is the group we have present that. Then, after that, Community Health Network, we have them present overdose prevention. And then, at the end of the overdose prevention, if you can show that you could actually inject the object that Kim has there to do that with, then you get a kit, has two samples. Now, we've had a lot of people approach us and tell us they've used their kits, they use them in parking lots, they've used them on the street, they've used them at gas stations, everywhere but home. And they were happy that they had them with them, because they saved lives. And when they come and tell you that, they just beam, you know, that they saved someone's life. It makes them feel good about it. So, sometimes, it's not a bad thing to have a kit around. You just wanna make sure also that those are safe and out of the hands of youngsters that could get them possibly and hurt themselves. So, this is a really great event, and we're hoping that we can have a lot of people attend, and especially for the rock painting on that Saturday for the youth. That'll be a lot of fun. And then, after that one, we implemented last year, the INYS, everybody know what that is? The Indiana Youth Survey into the school system. We have a national survey, but it doesn't break down to all the communities. So, it hits up like, it would cover maybe Indianapolis, or Fort Wayne, Chicago, the larger areas, but it doesn't break down into our local schools. So, we could not get what Beach Grove had on it. So, Indiana University created a group that actually ran this out of it, and it's funded through FSSA. And so, we were able to get a grant through Drug Free Marion County to be able to implement it, pull all the information we had together, compile it. That's how they ended up getting the Prevention Matters in. That's how we ended up working all the programs in, and still working with more programs and doing the fundraising, was because of that grant. And they used to do that every year. So, our plans were to do it each year, and follow our sixth graders right now, all the way through the twelfth, to see if our programs were gonna make any difference. But unfortunately, they changed it to every other year now, every even year. So, we just implemented it last year, so it won't be implemented again until next year. But that'll just let us follow the sixth, the eighth, and the tenth graders then, is what we'll look at following. So, anyway, we'll be implementing that in 2020. We write grants, quite a few grants. We've already gotten in like five different grants for programs. I'm getting ready to write a couple more. One of the things that we wrote a grant for, and we're real happy about, two scholarships. One was a thousand, is a thousand dollars, we're gonna be handing out this year, for a youth who is going to be going to college, a senior who is going to be going to college for something in the line of mental health, substance prevention. And then the other one is five hundred dollars, and that five hundred dollars will go to either a teacher, or an organization in the school system that is going beyond their scope of work toward prevention. So, whomever that might be, we'll look at giving them the money as well. So, we're gonna try to do two scholarships a year like that. And then, so that you know that we're not just a group of people who are out here trying to pull something together, we're working with several different companies, organizations. So, we're working with Drug Free Marion County. They're a very large organization, and how I met them was the mayor at the Faith-Based Roundtable, actually had Randy Miller in, who's the executive director for that. He had him in to talk about this. And then, Pastor Paul Kirby asked, he's the chair, right, for the Faith-Based Roundtable, asked me if I would do something to create a program. We were just gonna create a little bitty program. We had like eight people, and in three weeks, we were like a forty-five person coalition. I mean, when people got their hands on the information, they all just wanted to join and help. So, it went from eight people to forty-five in about three weeks. We, so Drug Free Marion County has really helped us, they're on board, they, we've learned a lot from them. SAMSA, again, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, we are a partner. We're happy to say that they don't just partner with everybody, but because we did their Talk, They Hear You program, and we were part of the registrate, registration of that, the pilot for the registration program. And so, we're still partnered with them, so it's really nice to be a partner with them. They're a national organization, a gold standard for everybody for that, and so we're real happy about that. The Healthy Sides Initiative, Franciscan, has developed a Healthy Sides Initiative, Wellness Based on Community Health Needs. So, what they're doing is, they're trying now, right now, to do surveys and research. So, if you get surveys or research on it, please fill it out and get them, get that to them. They're trying to see what the South Side is really needing as far as health, health goes, in every direction. So, please, receive something, fill that out. Or if you see that they're having a public meeting, please attend that. And then, CATCA is Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America, we're a member of that. And then, InStep. InStep is a new group, Indianapolis group, like the CDEFC, only large, very large. And they're trying to cover everything all the way from prevention, intervention, to treatment, to recovery, and to post-recovery, to hopefully keep them from going back into it. So, they've got five steps that they're looking at, and I think they're trying to become the Indiana National Group for that. So, actually, I am a partner or member to all of those groups, and so I go to all those meetings to network with these people. You have your legislators on these groups, you have your executive directors of like the hospitals for mental health and addiction on there. So, I'm working with a lot of these larger groups, so that we can actually give the best program to Beach Grove that we can give as far as substance misuse. So, we're really trying to get, get out there, get the word out there, and get the needles off our streets, and give our youth, the biggest important thing is to give our youth the best life possible, free of substances, as much as what we possibly can. And does anybody have any questions? I know I rambled through that real fast, I tried to get through it, but I wanted to explain a little bit about what we were, and what we, what we do. That way, when you see us, you know, we're not out there to try to close bars, we're not out there trying to take away cigarettes, we're not out there trying to do anything except youth, what's the drinking age? Eighteen? What is cigarette age, or drinking age? Twenty-one? Eighteen for cigarettes. We're trying to keep them from doing these things, and, you know, before they get there. And we're trying to make it as fun as possible. So, we do a lot of fun events, we're a fun coalition. Come check us out at one of our meetings.
Thank you, Diana.
Diana, there's an extra one. Diana, right here. There's an extra one. Do you know anybody else that might? Thanks, thanks so much.
Thanks, Diana. And listening to you talk, you know, that, that started right there at that table two years ago. So, it was, it's been a nice transition. And just for the public's information, we collected seven hundred and eight pounds of medicine in 2018. So, there's quite a bit out there. At this time, we'll suspend the council meeting, and go into a required public hearing concerning the OKRA grant. And I will defer to Mike Kleinpeter, so to come up and, and give us the rules and directions, so we can proceed. Mike?
Good evening, Council. My name is Mike Kleinpeter with Kleinpeter Consulting Group, and I'm an OKRA-certified grant administrator. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to discuss the city's application for grant funding. We'll be applying for- We'll be applying for a grant through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs in the amount of $600,000. The city will be contributing a local match of $5,000 from the general fund and $145,000 from business owners. This is the first of two required public hearings. We have a proposal due on May 3rd. OKRA will then review our proposal to determine if the project is eligible and any adjustments that need to be made. A site visit will be conducted in June by an OKRA staff member. Our application is due on June 28th. We want to make sure that citizens of the city are fully informed and have the opportunity to voice any concerns or support for the project and ask any questions they may have. Funds available for the Main Street Revitalization Program through OKRA are limited, and applications are very competitive. If the community is successful with their application, award announcements will be on August 15th, 2019. I'll turn it over to Pat Jacobs to tell you about some of the buildings that are involved.
My name is Pat Jacobs with Architecture Trio. I worked with you on your downtown revitalization plan and will be continuing to assist your community and Mike Klein Peter on the application. I just wanted to run quickly through the various addresses that are included in the project thus far. And we've lost three from the original downtown plan and have since added three buildings. So I did want to call your attention to those and mention also the original ones that are still in the project. First one is 220 Main Street, which is the studio. We're primarily doing windowwork, stucco, signs, awnings. 302, 304 Main Street. Mr. Mater, it's the new landscape architect that's moving into town. He actually has two facades, he sits on the corner. We're focusing on his storefront windows and the masonry and adding a new contemporary canopy. Henthorn Insurance, 407, 411 Main Street, looking at roof reconfiguration, some column replacement, some masonry work in doors. 423 Main Street, which is one of the new projects that's been added. Fifth Avenue Grill and Bar. Again, we've got two facades, working on the front facade as well as the parking lot side. Primarily storefront windows and masonry. 501 Main Street and 502, 504 Main Street are two that fell out of the project. So I, I want to call your attention to those because you may remember from the last presentation, those were included. 503, 505, Main Street is the dentist that's along Main Street. That's going to be masonry doors, canopy and windows. Harvey's Tavern at 614, 618, that's both the one-story and the two-story building, that's a new one. That scope of work is not yet defined. 617 Main Street, Beach Grove Masonic Lodge is one of the, they were originally involved, then they kind of backed out, and now they're back involved. They want to do some masonry work and some general restoration. They also have a wonderful historic sign that they'd like to see reinstalled. 620 Main Street, Eckstein Shoes, masonry windows, awnings, some signage. 622 Main Street is the tea shop, very similar to, work to the shoe shop. 700, 704 Main Street, the, the building that Victory Rolls is in. They had originally talked about awnings, there's some conversation that we might not do quite as many, but awnings and masonry will also be part of their work. And finally, 758 Main Street, which is Napoli Villa, looking at canopy, storefront windows and signs. So the whole idea, and you can see there's some repetition in the kind of work that we're doing, many of the storefront windows here in your community and upper store, upper story windows need some work. So we're going to focus a lot of attention on that. You'll be surprised, however, with the kind of transformation that can cause for your community. A lot of new interest in the storefronts, people begin to pay attention. We're doing some very similar work in Vincent's right now, and it's quite amazing, the number of new businesses that have come in and the transformation that's occurred as a result of the work that's going on there. So we'll be working with you in the application process and wish you good luck with this.
Thank you.
So I think now would be the time for public comment. Was there a sign-in sheet? Did anybody sign it? Mr. Royal?
Right here. Two people signed up.
Okay.
Mr. Grenoble's the first one.
Is there any public comment about the M30 hearing? The only question I had, and we talked about it, is this all or nothing? So in other words, if somebody, if we don't come up with a $150,000 match, are we out of the ballgame?
Yeah, so we're not out of the ballgame. We could come in at, at $400,000 with, you know, a hundred and, $100,000 even match, or we could be at $500,000 grant with a $125,000 match. Really, it kind of depends on where we fall, but it, it kind of speaks to competitiveness, though. When, when the scoring committee's looking at who to fund, the more buildings, the more you have involved, the more competitive your project is. So we lost a couple buildings last time, so that's kind of why we decided to hold off one more, to, to bring these other buildings up and to add a couple more to make us a little more competitive. We certainly are eligible for the program with a lesser amount, as long as we have a 20% match. So it's not an all or nothing, so we could end up coming in less than that.
And deadline on the match? Because I know last time, that's when we ran in.
Yeah, so Jim, have we set a hard date yet? I don't think there's been a hard.
Probably no date.
Yeah, we're thinking middle of May, so that way, we, all the business owners can get a check to Dan to get deposited, make sure everything clears before the city signs off saying they have all the money. So.
I know last time, the majority of them had the money for their match, were ready to turn it over, but with those buildings falling out, we thought, well, why apply for a part, a portion of a grant that when we can get 600? So why go for 400 when there's only 200 on the table and there's plenty of other businesses? Who would be interested in participating in the grant? So that's why we held off and told those people to keep their money, and then we'll, you know, re-approach it in the, in the spring and get your money then, so.
Mr. Taylor?
I didn't necessarily sign to speak, but since you said my name, I'll come up. I'm one of the three trustees for Beach Grove Masonic Lodge. We've supported this from the, from the get-go. And whenever you put an influx of energy, financing into a community, it's going to help it. And I think this is going to help grow the, the Main Street. I would like to see the parade come back to go down Main Street, we missed that. But yeah, Beach Grove Masonic Lodge does support it, and I, we think it will, will help the economy and the neighborhood continue to blossom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just those two.
Is there anybody who did not sign up for the public hearing but would now like to speak?
Jim Kaufman, family owns Eckstein Shoe Store. This project, we started working on this when Next Stop was formed about three years ago. Diana knows she was very instrumental in helping us get this organization started. What was it, three years ago about we started? Just gives a voice for our business owners here on Main Street. One of our initial goals was to get this facade grant. If you go to the other small towns in, in Indiana, it's, 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 it's been done in many of these towns, we're not reinventing the wheel at all. I know Greenfield did it, Greenwood just got done with theirs. They, they see an influx of businesses and people who aren't participating, they see that improvement, and they start working on their buildings as well. I think Main Street's in a very good position right now. Businesses are, are coming in. We've had three or four in the last few months, and I know there's a couple more coming in here, at least across the street. She'll be opening up, I think, in two months, so I think it's a good thing. I think it's, the businesses who are here are here to stay. We have business owners who have recently moved in, like Mater. He invested a lot of money in, in his buildings, and we're excited to have him. So I think it's something that will be good for Beach Grove at large, so. Thank you.
I own Henthorn Agency, and I'm also a part of this effort to try to revitalize Main Street and bring new businesses in and keep it vibrant. And I don't want to reiterate what's already been said, but we've been working on it for a long time, and it's going to be a great jumpstart, I think, to revitalize our Main Street.
Anyone else like to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we will go back to the agenda for the council meeting. Council, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated February the 4th, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have a couple requests. That is, I guess my question was on special presentations, I think it's really nice when people take the time and they come in, they do a special presentation, and I just think it's kind of a, reflects on who we are, that we, we acknowledge them when, when they do their presentation. And, you know, we had the youth council, and then when we get to the Main Street update, Next Stop Beach Grove, I mean, Mr. Kaufman did spend a good time presentation with his presentation, he took the time to prepare, and I think that we do owe that respect to acknowledge the person that does the, that, you know, that does the presentation. I would like to have that added to the minutes. And then, on my closing comment, I would request that you go back and listen to the minutes, and when you do your transcribing, my comments is not correct. I read this word for word, and it's not the way I did. And then, because it kind of reflects the way my comments are, and my closing statement was that this would actually cost the taxpayers money, and that's not at all how I presented it. So I would request that you go back and re-listen to the audio or watch it, and please get those minutes on my comments correct. I would appreciate that.
Well, I think what you need to do is present something to me in writing so I can get it correctly. That's the first time I've got one of these, and same way with presenting.
It was, I gave it, I handed it out to you last time.
Same way with presentations. If they want it in the record, it needs to be as a presentation.
And on that, I'm just asking that you include the, as you did everyone else, just the person who did the presentation, as you did everyone else.
What do you mean? I'm not understanding what you're asking.
On Main Street update, Next Stop Beach Grove, just include the person who did the presentation. And that would be?
You're referring to today's meeting, right? Or?
The minutes, we're talking about the minutes.
The minutes. I realize the minutes, but I didn't know if you meant for the future, was what it was.
Well, that would be nice, yes, so we could show that person respect. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or corrections concerning the minutes? If not, I'll ask.
How do we ensure these actually get corrected?
We see them next time.
Just like she said, you can go back, look on the website. They're all put on the website. You guys should approve them, you know, you should research and make sure it's right for it, if you're going to approve it.
And that's what we're doing now, correct? We're, we're showing the corrections that we'd like to have made.
Well, yes, but what I'm trying to tell you from now on, and especially the way this has been done, if, it's just like how many football players was here, I don't know who they are, there's no one that's gave me a list or anything else. So unless I have that, they will not be inserted into the minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll make motion to approve the minutes with the corrections that Liz mentioned.
One second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Go to public comments. Counselor?
Does Mr. Grenoble want to speak again?
Of course he does.
I'm Dave Grenoble, I live at 115 South 12th Avenue in Beach Grove, Indiana, 46107. And as many of you know, I've sent quite a few emails in the last 10 days, and I appreciate all the responses and conversations. Chris Duffer calls, Kevin Day calls, Buddy calls, Vito and Mr. Harrison and I have exchanged emails, so I appreciate the input. There's two things. You guys know when I come up here, I'm not trying to make anybody look bad, I'm trying to give you information. And I gave you some bad information, but I didn't know it at the time until I had a meeting last week. When we talked last fall about the sewer rates, when we were talking about Greenwood, Greenwood actually is in the same situation we are. They pay citizens to process just like we do. The difference is that Greenwood has a little bit more control. They've actually put new interceptors in, and they actually gave a discounted fee to property owners to allow them to come in, to make sure that nobody was dumping sump pump, fresh water, their rain from the gutters into the sewers, so that they were making sure they weren't getting improperly charged, which I know is something you've expressed a concern about here. And the other thing is, I know that at times, everybody kind of gets on you guys a little bit, and I want to commend you right now, because last fall, when everybody was talking about the sewer rate increase, you all listened to the community. And even Mayor Buckley took his mayor's hat off long enough to come at you as citizen, Dennis Buckley, and told you he wasn't for it. And as it turned out, citizens did not get the rate increase. They didn't get approved. Therefore, there was no reason to raise the rate. So I commend you guys for standing your ground and protecting the "we" of people. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Carla Richardson?
I would like to withhold my comment if I can until you talk about words under one, but I would like to ask that you read it in its entirety and not my title. That's all, if that's possible.
That's it. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I am too.
Is there anybody who did not sign up to speak that would like to speak? If not, we'll move to committee reports. ABC.
We had our meeting today, and we approved, had an automatic renewal for the Loyal Order of the Moose Club, 1883, located at 3320 South Emerson Avenue, Beach Grove, Indiana. That's all we had today. Any questions? We do have a couple of the businesses in the area that are looking at expanding their patios, so we've been, I've been working with them and getting that worked out, so hopefully in the spring, we'll have some more outside seating, so. All right? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The clerk passed out the greenscape. Compliance has not reported yet, and you should have had a public safety report in your packet. The last pending committee report is financial. Dan?
Good evening, councilors. In February, we paid the following lease payments. 2015 police cars, $12,729.18. 2016 DPW Parks vehicles, $26,304.96. Stormwater fund balance, $281,084.45. Their packs arrived, and we paid the first lease payment of $28,078.27, and a $50,000 down payment. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated, no cost to taxpayers, financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beachgrove.com. The city corporation bank balance, $3,204,105.88. The utilities, $731,465.50. As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you, respectfully submitted. Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasure City of Beach Grove.
Questions for the clerk?
I got one question, this isn't for the clerk. When you're out of town or you're not, not present, who makes, who makes executive decisions in your place?
It depends on, generally, when I leave town, I get called by phone.
You get what?
I get called by phone. And then, if it's something that's happened, I still get called by phone after the fact. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm curious, I know the Moose got visited by compliance after a fundraiser, or not really fundraiser, kickoff campaign. And they've never been visited before. And this was while you were out of town.
Yeah, I got a phone call on that.
And who made that executive decision to send compliance over there?
They contacted me. That's part of my job. It has nothing to do with the mayor, yeah. And I wouldn't have cared who it was. We talked about it. We knew there could be some controversy over and we made the executive decision to go out there and visit them. It sounded like to me everything worked out just fine, Kevin.
I want to expand on it because Mark was the one who took the call. So if you could, however this transpired, if you could lay it out for him.
Look, I'm Mark Remm, I'm the fire inspector from Beach Grove. On Facebook, I saw where the Moose Lodge posted they were having a fundraiser for the lodge. They were going to have five live bands. State of Indiana requires that you have an amusement entertainment permit to operate that type of a function. I contacted the attorney, I went down to make sure they had it. That's why I went down. Not to cause a problem, because if I hadn't gone down and they hadn't applied, or if they just hadn't applied, the state of Indiana also reads Facebook. They would have sent a representative down there and they could have shut it down right then and fined them. I didn't want that. That's why I contacted the city attorney, that's why I went down. Just to make sure that they had what they wanted so they could have their fundraiser. It wasn't to cause a problem for them. And it wasn't really the stage, it was having five live band members. Several places in town have those. And we just wanted to make sure that they were being treated just like everybody else and didn't want to get them in any trouble.
What's the permit charge for a non-for-profit like they are?
They don't get charged anything.
So there's no, there's not even a permit fee, so?
No, there's no fee at all.
So it's a good thing to get the permit?
The promoters club gets it for the Fall Festival. Yeah, and Holy Name gets it for their fundraiser.
Yeah, three years ago, Holy Name, you know, I'm a member of Holy Name, lifetime member, they get a, they get a call because they're having tents on their Oktoberfest. And I said the same thing, go down there and figure it out. If they don't comply, they're not going to have a band that night.
Yeah.
And they did.
Craig, was it, was it Mark that you got the conversation with then? Was that who you talked to?
Yes.
Okay.
The brewery down on Main Street, there, I think March 9th, they're having a band. They were contacted, they have applied, they're going to get an inspection this week by the state fire marshal's office for their permit. Yeah, O'Garret's will have one for their tent and for St. Patrick's Day. Harvey's has one right now. I believe Night Owl's has a permit so that they can have entertainment there. So, you know, I'm trying to just make it fair for everybody. And I don't want the state to come in and make an inspection, shut a place down until they get the permit. Let's get a step ahead of it, get the permit so that the function can continue.
Is the permit for, if they have a stage area and a band?
It's the live entertainment. It's not actually the having the stage itself, it's having the live entertainment there, the live band, the DJ.
So like Harvey's, they don't have bands, they have a comedian night or something like that now?
Harvey's had a band.
Oh, they did?
Right. So they got theirs and it's good for a year.
So if they didn't have bands though, and they got like, I know they have these comedians come in.
They'd still need the permit.
Still, same thing.
Still need the permit. Because it's entertainment.
Okay, so they've had a lot of live bands in that building.
Uh huh.
I know, I've lived here for a long time.
Right.
So within a week of Rick Skirvin having his kickoff meeting for his candidacy for mayor there, then they get inspected on the bands, on the stage.
He's told you why?
Because of the band.
And then the mayor's out of town and even though I know the mayor has a cellphone, I have his cellphone number.
Right.
The city attorney makes an executive decision rather than call the mayor because, as he said in his letter, "A nightmare scenario is we take no action and there is a fire." Weren't we worried about them for the first seven years of your administration? Or, I shouldn't say your administration.
All I?
I should say the mayor's administration.
All I can say is, I've only been doing this position since roughly last October. I can't speak about what's happened in the past. I, my background, I came from the Indianapolis Fire Department, was the assistant fire marshal there. I was in charge of making sure that places had the proper permits. That's part of what I do here. I don't care who it is, I don't care what the function is, if a permit's needed, I'm going to go in, talk to them, make sure they get the proper permits.
I just find it curious that it happened within a week.
Did they get shut down? Did they get shut down or anything?
No.
And what's the problem?
Yeah, I mean, so.
I mean, really?
It's just a coincidence.
I understand it's a political thing.
Harassment, Dave?
Oh, come on. You know what, the first, you know what? Dave Grenoble and at that time, his friend Kevin Ruster were on, I won't say on, but they were encouraging the mayor to get compliance. He got compliance. Guess who was the first guy that got hit with compliance? I was. In my building, it wasn't you, it was whoever the first commercial guy was that come in and hit us with something because we had trash cans in the furnace room. And I got a ticket.
I got hit with compliance?
And I'm just saying, was that political? Dave and Kevin Ruster wanted compliance. I didn't cuss them. I mean, it was just the way it went. I even come into the council meeting, told everybody, I said, "Guess who got hit?" I did.
Let me explain something. So when these tickets are written, the reason they call me is because I'm the prosecutor in the city court. I'm the one that has to prosecute these cases. So sometimes I'll say, "Mark, you got to do better than that." And we had a guy who had some construction debris in his backyard and it was an issue as to whether it was a parking permit or parking service or not. So they called me first. It has nothing to do with the mayor being out of town and I'm not going to bother the mayor on his vacation to decide whether a case gets prosecuted or not. So they come to me, they don't, I don't bother the mayor unless it's something that, you know, is a very unusual circumstance.
I just, I got one little thing, Mark, I was trying to figure out. When you enact your job, when you go out, do you always go to the mayor to ask permission to go do it?
No, no, it's just kind of a courtesy thing.
Okay.
And it had nothing?
Because I was just curious why you went to Craig, that was all.
Just as a courtesy thing to let him know, because I, in my heart, I knew it was going to cause a problem. But it had nothing to do with what happened before. I don't even know exactly when Rick Skirvin had his event there. I don't, I don't get anything from him on Facebook. All I know is on Facebook, the Moose Lodge posted that they were going to have a fundraiser, they were going to have five live bands, they were going to have raffles, they were going to have 50/50s, they were going to have pull tabs. And I know when you have live bands, you need to have your amusement and entertainment permit from the state of Indiana. And all I did was want to go down, make sure they had their proper permits.
You went down because of something you've seen on Facebook?
Yes.
And you were not sent down?
No, I was not sent down.
Okay.
Mark, how many times a week do we talk? Me or somebody in your office?
I usually try to call you at least once a week, just to let you know what's going on in the city.
I don't know, because I've heard good things about Moose Lodge, but I've never been. Does anybody in the crowd know how often that facility has five live bands in one day? Yes.
Are you a member of the, have Facebook very long, Mark?
I've been on Facebook for a while.
And you even know that the Moose Lodge has had concerts 60 years?
Well, I know that, but I'm saying five bands in one day is a pretty significant show.
Right.
It's the same for whether it's one or five.
Okay, no, and I understand, but five kind of throws up a little bit more of maybe the crowd that would come in than maybe their house band that plays every night.
There's a capacity, so that would limit the amount of people that comes in, whether you have one band or five bands.
Okay, no, and I, thank you.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate it.
Yeah. So it's, I think she's got the information as far as the entertainment permit goes.
Okay, so an entertainment permit, according to the website states that it is a concert, dancing, bowling, et cetera, but the benefit for the Moose was actually on January 27th, so it was posted back in December for the first time, if you were following Facebook, to help a musician. And those five bands, if you were to also look on the Facebook page, they were in 45 minutes increments, there were no five bands playing at one time.
So also, the very next day, the state fire marshal shows up for the first time in 60 years.
That was because of the application for the permit.
I'm just saying that it's the first time, I'm not accusing you of anything.
Right.
And I appreciate your job and everything, you can keep people safe. I'm just saying that it's the first time in 60 years that the state fire marshal showed up a day after compliance shows up.
But it, but my, I want to just make the statement that the benefit was on January 27th. It was first posted 30 days prior to that on the Moose website on Facebook. So why is it that you wait until the mayor goes out of town? Please don't interrupt me, let me finish. For this event on January 27th, because you showed up at the Moose for compliance for bands happening after the date of January 27th. There were no bands at the meet and greet for the political campaign to shut the Moose down. The January 27th benefit had already happened and then you're stating that you showed up because there were bands coming up for the benefit, that benefit was already over with. You showed up in February, the political meet and greet for all political campaigning applicants.
It was open to everyone, by the way. I sent it to the station.
Right, it was on February 16th.
I did not go there because of any political fundraising that was going on. I saw on Facebook where they were having a fundraiser and when I read it, it said it was for the Moose Lodge.
Okay, but it says January 27th, you showed up weeks after that.
I don't faithfully look at Facebook every day. And when I see something that tells me they are going to have a band, I'm going to try to make sure that they have what they need from the state of Indiana. If the city would like, I can stop doing that and just let the state go on and do what they do. And I don't think we want our businesses having, being shut down and fined for not having this permit.
I think the issue is, is that there's fairness.
I agree. And when I, that's the first time I knew they were having any bands there. That's why I went down. And I went down there and the door was locked, there was nobody there, it was 10 o'clock in the morning. They don't open, I guess, till noon. I don't know, I'm not a member of the Moose. I did make a phone call and asked the gentleman if he had it and he told me he had that permit. So I was, as far as I was concerned, I was done. I wasn't going any further. The gentleman says he has the permit that I asked him to have, then I'm done, I'm not going to pursue it, push any further. And evidently, he didn't have it because I was told that they had applied for that permit after I went down and nobody there and then just called and talked to him.
Can I come up and speak?
Past public comments.
Should you come up and speak?
I'm Burma Hook, I'm on July 17th and I've been a member of the Beach Grove Moose since 1978. The only time I ever remember the state fire marshal ever coming in was when the building burned, when it was the old Grove, because they switched buildings many, many years ago. I think it's, I think it's wonderful that the mayor is making sure that all our compliance issues are met, but I just find it very hard to believe that it took 60 years to walk in an organization that raises money for children and elderly and they've always had fans, they've always had music. Why are you waiting until seven days after a, after a meet and greet? I don't get it. And I think it's great that you're doing it, but you better be doing it to every business equally, because there could be some problems.
And that's what I'm trying to do. I don't, I don't care who owns a business. If I find out that there's bands that are going to be there, I will be there to make sure they have their proper permit. And I, when I inspect a location, I explain that to them if they don't have them already.
What's the history of the amusement entertainment permit? What's the history of that particular permit? Did it stem from something that happened within?
It's?
Is it 60 years old that, that permit?
I don't think the permit is that old.
Yeah.
But?
Because I know after they had?
There was a?
At the state fairgrounds.
Oh, the fairground was during a Halloween when a?
But I didn't know if it stemmed from something, these permits stemmed from something else?
No, it didn't stem from that one. It's just that there's a history of Beverly Hills Supper Club where over 100 people were killed when they tried to exit out of the building, it didn't have the exiting.
Okay.
And they had revolving doors and they didn't open right and people just piled up.
It's been around for a long time.
It's been around for a while.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
That concludes committee reports. Unfinished business. I'll call back up Todd Bertrand to give us an update on the RFP. Todd?
Thank you, mayor, thank you, councilors. Just to give you a brief update, where we're at, I have been in contact or attempting to contact each one of you just to make myself available for any questions or comments so I'm not operating in a vacuum of misinformation or misunderstanding. The appraisal update, there's going to be a site visit on March 21st, 2019. It won't take very long, that will be with Brad and Phil. And may I say publicly, they've been very, very helpful. Those two gentlemen have been in bringing forward any historical data of the system. That is going to be important to the request for proposal. Financial information has been, is in the process or has been gathered and we'll continue to ask those questions. And then currently, we've got a draft sent over to the city attorney for his initial legal review as we continue to assemble all the information. So we're getting close to the next step and that's you approving it and authorizing it to be posted publicly so we can get responses from any interested parties. I'll take your questions if you have any.
I just want to clarify to the public, there's been some emails to the council concerning the use of OKRA grants for these kind of infrastructure needs and I just want you to kind of share your knowledge and how something like that would or would not work.
Yeah, I'm not a, first and foremost, I'm not a grant specialist. I think you heard it already in this chamber tonight that those are limited funds and they're highly competitive. And if you go onto the OKRA website, you will see that there's thresholds of funding of $600,000 on a certain parameter and for projects over a million dollars in total or projects under a million is $550,000. I cannot tell you what the needs assessment of your system currently is. There is a flow, a flow meter report that Phil has produced that references rain events, so that suggests that there's infiltration. So I don't have the professional services on what the needs assessment is of the infrastructure. But again, you've heard it in your chamber tonight relative to your Main Street project that is, funding is limited and those applications are highly competitive. So, yeah, there's always monies available. Do they rise at a level of what's needed and are you going to be successful and are they sustainable in the long term? That would be my knowledge of it.
And then the amount, the amount that you would get from that would be not near the kind of monies that would take to fix what we have to have.
Absent of an engineering report of the condition of the current infrastructure, what would be required to do any repairs, replacement, maintenance, things like that? I can't speak to that because I don't know if there's any up-to-date documents. I know there's some documentation from '05, '06 where the collecting, the collection system was televised. We do have those, we'll include all the historical documents in our request for proposal. So madam counsel, I don't know that infrastructure need, that capital need, but it is limited to 600,000 and 550,000 depending on your rates and the capital infrastructure need.
I know, I went on the OKRA website myself and the cities and towns that were awarded these monies throughout the state were outlier cities and they were, seemed to be more rural, there was no connectivity to them whatsoever. And the population for these awards were anywhere from 250 population and I think the greatest was around 4,272 persons. So that's, most of these areas that received these grants were not compared to our population size. So I just was concerned, it just seems like the grant award for these seemed to be something different than what we would have here for our city need.
Certainly, you know, again, I'm not a grant writer or even a reviewer, but given that your current state, you are dependent upon Citizens Energy Group as your treatment agent and contractor, I'm sure that comes into consideration when, as you note, there are communities that are, you know, outside a metropolitan area that don't have that ability, so that could affect the competitive nature of it.
But I thought since it was brought up by somebody in the community, we would, could address it here?
Sure.
For the open public.
And I, go ahead, counsel. When, when your RFP is completed?
Yes.
And then, then we will get a response from, as to? And then, then we will get a response from, as to who is interested?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll work with Craig in, in how we advertise that, just like any other kind of bidding process. And then there will be a period of thirty days, whatever we program into it, thirty to forty-five days for any response. Any, any, any interested party that would like to bid and then enter, enter into the process of having this conversation. Let me be clear. That is not a predisposition to outcome. You control that process up until a certain point. So, it's really a fact-finding mission to see if, A, there are interested parties. You control every bit of that up until a certain point when you sign. Or if, if you get to a point, you sign an asset purchase agreement. It's a legal document. Then you're, you're, you're going to face, either party would face penalty of backing out. And so, that's when it really turns into a legal exercise to making sure that we have everything in order that, that gives us protection from any, in the process.
And you're, and in your experience, who's responsible for signing that document?
In my experience, it has been the, the governing legislative body.
Okay, so then we would see who would be responsible or who would be interested?
Correct.
And then if there were a, a offer that we liked?
Correct.
Then we would enter into a purchase agreement with them and then we would vote on that. Is that...
Correct. You, the statute is prescriptive. So, there's, there are ordinances and resolutions that you must pass to dispose of that, that property. It's contained in the wastewater statutes in the Indiana Code. So, that is, again, not a hurried exercise, but something that Craig would, would guide you through in drafting those ordinances and having public hearings. I will advocate as, as your advisor that we have public education discussions that, outside the, the construct of this chamber. I have found that to be very effective. There are, the, the rate analysis is, is still underway in production by Peters and Associates. What will rates look like over, over the long term with citizens treating your, your wastewater? So, we try to build as much predictability and knowns into this. And certainly, one outcome is what you currently have today. You own the system. You regulate it by, by ordinances that you, you employ and the rates that you may or may not approve. At the end of the day, it has to come before you to approve an ordinance to dispose and move to the next, the next phase. So, it's not an executive exercise. And that's what I would advocate. I would advocate, A, you have more than one public education session outside the construct of this. And then have the open discussion, what, what does it look like under our ownership? What would it look like under someone else's ownership?
I had a question. Something that's kind of been a sticking point with some of the citizens is the cost of this process that we're going through right now.
Yeah.
I, I know that you had mentioned your services at the onset, I believe, were 3,000 a month.
Correct, correct.
You expected that process to take three months or nine, nine grand there. I was wondering if the mayor could maybe highlight any of the other outlined expenses outside of Todd's services that would be pertaining to this process or is that it?
No, I cannot. I would have to defer to the clerk for any bills that has been paid.
It's far from Todd's services. There's attorney fees. There's appraisals. There's a lot.
Some of this has occurred even...
It's a very costly thing.
Before Todd. I mean...
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I'm not blaming him for them fees.
No, I, I wasn't either. I was just saying is, that's why the amount in this process might be bigger than we think.
Wait, can you supply that?
Not at the moment.
Well, I mean, Dan, I mean, I'm just asking you to supply it right now. I mean, what, what would you need to supply that?
A lot of research to find out.
Is that something you're willing to do?
Sure. I got no problem doing it.
Do we need to do a public records request? What, what would need to be done?
That's not needed.
Okay, okay. So, I'm requesting it.
Okay.
I guess, I guess I'm wondering, Dan, you were on a lot of those emails where that question came up and you never spoke at all.
No one asked me. All's I was doing. I was included on the email, but I was not asked.
I would...
I think you'll be shocked when you figure, when you find out how much we've spent.
I'd go along with Vito. I'd like to know those numbers.
I guess if we're going to be shocked, it seemed like you'd be eager to, eager to reveal it.
When we contracted Todd, we voted on that. And he has mentioned it was a, an update to the appraisal for 9,500. Is that something that we would also vote on or is that already a foregone conclusion that we're going to get that?
I'll, I'll defer to the mayor. But under professional services, obviously, the administration can, can, you know, award those contracts or, or approve those. I think for me and my involvement, I'm a, a new player to this. It was important that, that I come before you and you approve this. Because it really, I, I don't want to sound raggedocious. I bring a whole different skill set to the whole, this, this conversation and topic. So, you know, to that end, I don't know exactly, obviously, the cost exposure that has occurred prior to me. And I don't see beyond any legal, legal fees beyond the, the, beyond the appraisal. My scope is very narrowed. Can have a conversation of what role I play beyond ninety days. And I still am very confident that we will be, you know, have a hard copy ready to go at the end of March. And we can obviously just, again, discuss what my role, if any, is beyond the end of March. You had a question. I guess I stepped on top of the mayor.
Well, I would, I, I guess you deferred to the mayor, so.
What was the question again?
Well, he had mentioned $9,500 for an update to the appraisal. Is, is that something that we're going to get or is that something we vote on? Or is that something you've already contracted? What will happen or will that, is that going to be purchased?
The, are you talking about the next appraisal that's coming?
Well, Todd had said in his last meeting last month that, that it was an outfit called Walden Environmental Engineer, a Ted Nietze. And he was going to do an update to the appraisal and that was going to cost $9,500. My question is, do we vote on that like we voted on Todd's services? Or is that money that's in your budget that you're already going to spend or where, where does that come from?
That comes from the sewage works budget. And the mayor serves as the executive of the sewage works. So, I have the authority to do the appraisals without authorization from the council.
And I just wondered.
And I also have the authority as, as the executive of the utilities to hire Todd without control or without approval of the council. I didn't do that because I wanted it out in front of you. That's why.
And I appreciate that.
In order to do the sale, you have to have three separate appraisals. Two of them have to be engineers and one of them has to be land. Or two of them has to be land and one has to be engineers. So, we have to have three.
No, I know we did a resolution that...
Didn't we have three appraisals last, last year, I thought?
Two. Well, I know we did a resolution about three appraisals, but I'm not sure if it mentioned the cost of those appraisals.
Only had two last year?
We did Westler and Strewsbury.
Are those still good for...
And, yes. And Stephanie Yott, I forget her trainer and associate. She did the land appraisal. Yeah, so we need another one.
Okay.
Which is this one.
And the environmental, I mean, that's a must. That has to be done. I mean, that, that's an absolute necessity. So, that's for anything to move forward, that's right, right? The, the environmental part of this, I mean...
That's, I think that would be part of the appraisal.
Environmental...
What, what, what were you talking about? The environmental, the environmental study? I mean, that environmental study of all this is, is a must. It has to be part of the whole...
What I mentioned was Walden Environmental Engineers who they do the appraisal.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry.
They do the land, I think.
Okay.
Just an asset appraisal.
Okay.
Are you done, Todd? If I, if the council has other questions, I'm happy to...
No, I was going to, what did you mean by site visit? Is that more of a paperwork with...
So, Ted will come on site and meet with Brad and Phil and inspect, you know, any manholes and get that inventory and actually look at any maps, things of that nature for him to do his work.
So, we'll be physically looking at things?
He'll be physically here.
Yeah. Now, one thing I did not catch on last time.
Okay.
You did, you, you worked for the city of Westfield.
I do.
Were you there at the time when they were going through their process?
From the word go.
Yeah.
That's my full-time work.
Okay. So, and I don't, I don't think you mind this, but I mean, are you like the deputy mayor of Westfield?
My full-time work, I am.
Okay, alright.
For the record, I have my own tax ID number, my own LLC, so I can operate and keep the bright white lines of separation so I don't cross-pollinate my work.
Okay. And I, I did understand that, you know, in Westfield, dealing with water, is that correct?
Water and wastewater at the time.
Right, and treatment of those things as well as...
Correct.
And was there like physical buildings and stuff involved as well?
There, yeah. So, they have a, several wellheads, several elevated tanks on the, the water distribution side, on the wastewater side. You have several lift stations. You have a treatment, a wastewater treatment facility. So, yeah, you had things above grade.
Yeah. And I was just curious at the time, how did you guys, in a brief statement, how did you guys proceed when you said, hey, we might want to...
So, not dissimilar from this, we entered, we, we, the city of Westfield retained Fageri Baker Daniels to be the, the, the project manager. So, I was the, I acted as the city's representative to that team. Fageri Baker Daniels also represented the city of Indianapolis in the Citizens, City of Indianapolis transaction. So, that's why the mayor and the council chose to use Fageri with their, their experience and background. So, that's where I learned a lot of this process. One initial step under their direction was a request for expressed interest. It was an added step on top of the request for proposal. So, it was, it took some time and it certainly took some money to put an RFI or RFEI out on the street, so to speak, to see who would be interested in, in maybe acquiring or managing the asset. So, they did not choose a, a, or have a predisposed outcome. There was a management agreement. You're probably familiar with those in, in the past with the city of Indianapolis or a, a straight-out acquisition.
Because there were probably some people who wanted to manage versus sell, right?
Correct. You still, under a management contract, you still own the assets. You're still, the ones have to borrow the money. You still raise the rates. And they make their money on the margin of efficiencies they can bring to the system.
Did you have a good idea who was going to buy before you?
No, actually, early on, there were site visits by twelve entities. About four left during that, so there was no money to be made because it was still relatively new and well, and well-maintained with technology. In the end, there were three bidders who put sealed bids on the table. One was a, a company out of Canada, Indian American and Citizens Energy Group.
And, you know, I don't know if, did Dan was able to email you or get you information based on some of the numbers or...
So, I, I, at last meeting, I sent the clerk an email and said, I'm happy to sit down. I think it did take Craig to motivate and get a response.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just wanted you to know kind of some of the concerns that I have.
Sure.
Because I know, when I think last time we talked, the concern was maybe that, like, Westfield might have been different. That they had actually employees, number of employees working for the system. And really in Beach Grove, it's not. A, a lot of this money finds its way into public safety with police and fire. And my, my biggest, my biggest concern is always keeping in mind, how do we make that up? I know I'm kind of jumping steps on it, but I, I, I don't want to not say it and then someone said, why didn't you say that?
No, I don't think you're jumping steps at all. If, in Westfield, not only were there twelve utility employees specifically assigned to the water and wastewater systems, they were billing clerks. So, there he had, field labor. You had billing clerks. And that community had a dependency of approximately $2 million outside of the, the operation of utilities. So, my recommendation, 1.3, as I understand, is the number. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
So, my recommendation is, quite frankly, to sit down and say, okay, where do these monies go? How do we overcome that? Because at the end of the day, your taxpayers, the people you represent, are paying that bill either by flushing their toilet or paying their property taxes. And it is not uncommon for cities and towns across the state of Indiana, quite frankly, across the country to use that cash to subsidize city operations. I would argue that there's a bit more regulation on the property tax revenue side than there is the wastewater side because the more you use, the more you flush, the more you pay. So, there, there certainly, it is, it is an important matter. If I'm in your chair, I'm asking that same question. And we say, okay, what is, and again, I know there's some hypersensitive sensitivity to professional services. I don't know who your financial advisors are, but it may be worth having that conversation or considering, alright, you have a one, if, if we do sell, does the new owner come as a private entity paying property tax? Do they come as a non-for-profit? And I'm, you know, Citizens does have a, a public trust. Then you negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes. So, you sub, you, you offset some of that 1.3. So, it's a real issue for you. And I think it, it requires, and I'm happy to, to join in that conversation. One thing I might, I might add to this, that what occurred in Westfield was a, a project team consisting of members of their city council. So, it wasn't just the mayor's office operating in that vacuum. It was members of not only the administration, but also the, the legislative body to, to oversee the entire project. So, there was information that was being shared in real time. So, that might be something that you consider here in tackling that issue of the 1.3.
Yeah, you know, I, I always think ahead like in, as citizens, I, you know, here I live on Woodmott. And I think every time I do pay my sewer bill, I'm also, I've got something I've owned. I've, I've also am putting money back into public safety or so on. So, I know that, you know, here it is. And so, it is a big, you know, it is a big deal down the road, what we do. And I just want to make sure those things, we keep, never take our eye off that ball, you know?
I've never been involved in a project or been made aware of a project like this in a, a city or town that has not been emotional, that the gravity of such has not rested heavy upon the, the elected officials, the mayor, town council, city council. But the unique thing you have here in, in Beach Grove is you have two systems, one of which you own is, is a collection of pipes. And you have a water system that, to my knowledge, you've never really controlled. You've always been served by the city of Indianapolis, now Citizens Energy. So, you've got a unique set where part of you, you have that, you don't have that control. And that's a common word that comes up. But I will present to you again, as you well know, you have very little control over your wastewater side as well because you're, you are subordinate to citizens and how they, they treat you. So, I, I, I make no, I, I, I hope I don't diminish the, the emotional component of this. But this is an, an emotional project, but it should have predicated and founded upon business principles.
I don't know if this is much more emotional. Like I said, we went back eight years ago and I'm not trying to do different administrations.
Sure.
But eight years ago, we could have said, take it. Because all we would be doing is transferring.
Yeah.
But things changed in that and it, it had nothing to do with the current administration. We become dependent upon what was in there. So, I, I, I just want to say one other thing because I don't want to talk too long. But on the OKRA, in, one of the people I had had a conversation with was Dave Renoble and I appreciate that. But I kind of look at it, and I know this is really something that has nothing to do with you in a way.
Sure.
This is not the way, but I just wanted to state since we brought it up that, you know, no matter what, we still have this thing. We still have our sewer system. It's like having the old truck I have and you want to sell it. You still have to make sure the turn signals are going to work and you put gas in it. We can't neglect, and this administration hasn't neglected the sewer. I've seen pictures up, up here that have been terrible. And in one way, it misleads people because in a way, I think the mayor, the clerk, the council has done what it, it can as much as it can to try to help line and, and fix the sewers. So, I just wanted to say that I hope that we just keep that out on the front of us on this OKRA. I know we can, we can do one thing at a time, but we shouldn't let it go because we still don't know what's going to happen. I mean, the numbers might not be good for this. I personally don't know anybody who wants to buy a bunch of old pipes that's already getting money for them anyway. But we'll see what happens. That's what you're here for.
Yeah, you know, Mr. President, you, you point, make a good point. You, you just can't let the roof rot off the house if you're thinking about selling it. And so, you have a moral obligation to, to infuse money back into it. I think what will help make the case for, against is the rate study. You know, what kind of operating margin do you have to have over the long term? You know, what kind of operating margin do you have to have over the long term? What, what are, what are wholesale rates projected to, to increase? I don't know about you, I've, I've been a homeowner for nearly 30 years, and I haven't gotten a notice from my utility companies that they're lowering my rates. So rates do go up, the costs of service do go up. So I think, once that work product is finalized, that will help really tell a story of, there's, there's a near-term view of this, and there's a long-term view of this. And what do rates look like for the city of Beach Grove in the next five to 10 years?
And I do want to say thank you for how you tried to reach out, giving us the call.
No problem, yeah, no problem whatsoever, no problem. My, and, and clearly, if you have my numbers, and, and I'll be reaching out to the rest of you as well.
What time do you go to bed?
Depends, I've had, I've had an interesting five weeks for sure, so, thank you, sir.
I'd just like to clarify my statement that I made at the last meeting. I said the city would have been bankrupt if not for the sewer system. The sewer system is very viable financially, I don't think it's that big of an issue. What we don't see, we've relined pipes in this city, we've spent a ton of money on it, but my point being is, we bring in $1.3 million that goes into the general fund every year. So if you take the past seven years, times 1.3 million, it's a little over 9 million. We've only got 4 million in the bank. So the city of Beach Grove would be bankrupt without the money that comes into the sewer system. So you can say it any way you want, but without the sewer system, the city would have been bankrupt. So what's the worst-case scenario, bankrupting the city or selling the sewer?
Mr. Clerk, I, I don't know what you're, why you're guiding that to me, I'm, I'm, I'm here working on behalf of the city council. I'm, I'm not predisposing this city to any outcome. I'm here to guide through a process that has been proven to be successful. I, I'm not an adversary of yours, and I trust you're not of mine. I'm here not representing a utility company, I'm representing this community. And I have a moral and ethical obligation, I state facts.
I'm stating the fact right there.
And, and sir, you've been very clear, you're not for this.
If you can show me how you can replace that money, I wouldn't care if they sold it tomorrow.
Sir, it's true that I sent you an email and you didn't respond to that.
You're absolutely right, because I thought you understood what I was saying at this meeting, and just like you saying, Mr. Wiley motivated. I don't work for Mr. Wiley, I don't work for this council or the mayor, I work for the citizens of Beach Grove.
Dan, can we calm down, please?
No, I, this needs to be on the record. I work for the citizens of Beach Grove and their well-being. I'm here and was elected to protect their money. And one other clarification I want to make is about OKRA. I talked to Mike Kleen Peter last week, and you can get 700,000 for sanitary sewer, you can get 600 for stormwater. It makes no difference how many citizens you have, whether you're rural or whether you live in the middle of Marion County. But it's no more guaranteed that we cannot get money for the sewer system than when we can for Main Street.
Dan, it just seems that anytime he asks for anything, and because this whole process would began by Mayor Buckley, that you slam your doors and don't want to work with anybody. If you're working for the citizens of Beach Grove, why don't you contribute to this process like you were elected to do?
I am contributing, I just told him, 1.3 million times seven years, we got 4 million, that's a $5 million shortfall.
Dan, it's one thing that we have to get involved with requests that are directly to you, and then our attorney has to get involved after the third or fourth request.
It wasn't a third or fourth, so you're stating facts you know nothing about. He sent me an email.
There was an email chain of all the requests, so I mean, I guess.
I told him at the last meeting, because he did not understand what I was saying about the 1.3 million.
Why are you getting so agitated?
Can I, I, I just think everybody has made their point, does anybody have any questions for Todd?
No.
You're going to continue, go ahead.
Dan doesn't seem to get what we're saying.
No, I don't get it, because I will not bankrupt this city. That's not what I was put in here for.
So just real quickly, I want to make sure, I'm just reading off of the OKRA website.
Yeah, Todd, I appreciate you coming in.
My honor to serve you, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll continue to do my dead-level best.
Yeah, and I know the things, and, and I'm not, with Dan, not to keep you up here, I mean, these things I just, I want to throw at you, they're out of your, some of it's out of your realm.
It is.
You, you've got a particular job to do, and I, I get that, it's just something that I want to keep up there.
No, I, I think that, look, I make, again, I can't say it enough, I make, I don't want to diminish the 1.3. Whether it's 50, $500,000 for a community that's, that's 2,500 people, or 1.3 to Beach Grove. I think it's worth sitting down as part of this process to say, if you decide as legislators to dispose of these utilities for the long term, how do we overcome that 1.3? What other ways are there to do so?
Agreed, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be in touch, and I'll be here next month.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You don't have another city you're working on, do you?
General ordinance number 1, 2019 is up for approval on second reading only. And I think, before we introduce it, I think someone wanted to speak on it.
Yeah, she requested it be read in full.
It's be read in full, yeah, instead of title only.
Carla, you want it read first before you?
Yes.
Alright.
Good, good.
I don't have it in front of me, I wouldn't mind hearing it read too, so.
You have it, Dan?
Yeah, I got it. You ready?
Yeah.
General ordinance number 1, 2019 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 102 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove concerning noise control. Whereas the current Chapter 102 of the Code of Ordinances is outdated, needs to be repealed, and whereas with the dismantling of the hospital, certain sections of Chapter 102 no longer apply. And whereas the city-approved events in school functions sometime causes noises not normally heard throughout the city, and whereas the loud, unwarranted noises from moving vehicles could be disruptive and may be detrimental to the health of the general public. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 102 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove concerning noise control. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires the following changes to be made to Chapter 102 of the Code of Ordinances. Delete Chapter 102 noise control in its entirety and replace with the following. Chapter 102 noise control. General provisions. 102.01, public policy. 102.02, unlawful noises enumerated. 102.03, produced noises allowed. Non-commercial sound vehicles. 102.15 definitions. 102.20, commercial advertising prohibited. Penalty. 102.99 penalty. 102.01, public policy. It is hereby declared as a matter of public policy of the city as follows. A, that the creation of loud noises of various kinds within the city may constitute a public nuisance. B, that the creation of loud noises over a prolonged period of time may be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city. C, that it may be a necessity to determine the source of the loud noise by public safety employees, and the public may be asked to discontinue the loud noise for the public health of the residents of the city. 102.02, unlawful noises enumerated. Except as otherwise provided in this section and consistent with Chapter 98.02, it shall be unlawful for any person to make, continue, or cause to be made, or continued any loud, unnecessary, or unusual noise, or any noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, and peace or safety of others within the city. A, horns and signaling devices. The sounding of any horn or signaling device on any automobile, motorcycle, or other vehicle on any street or public place of the city, except as a danger warning, the creation by means of such signaling device of any unreasonable loud or harsh sound. The sounding of any such device for an unnecessary and unreasonable period of time. The use of any signaling device except one operated by hand, air, or electricity. The use of any horn, whistle, or other device operated by engine exhaust, and the continued or repeated use of any such signaling device when traffic is for any reason held up, or in any parade, or in any group of vehicles. B, radios, loudspeakers, amplifiers, and other music-producing devices. The reproduction of such, the reproduction of sound in such a manner as to disturb the peace, quiet, and comfort of neighborhood residents, or at any time in a motor vehicle, either moving or stationary with a louder volume than is necessary for convenient hearing, shall be a violation of this chapter. C, exhaust. The discharge into the open air of the exhaust of any internal combustion engine, except through a muffler or other device which will effectively reduce and prevent loud or explosive noises therefrom. D, defect and vehicle load. The use of any vehicle so out of repair or so loaded in such a manner as to create loud and unnecessary grating, grinding, rattling, or other noises. E, construction activity. When permits are issued by the city for demolition, alteration, or repair of any structure, work shall be conducted between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. every day, except in case of urgent necessity in the interest of public health and safety. F, infrastructure improvements. Any infrastructure improvement work conducted by the city of Beach Grove or their hired agent shall be conducted between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on weekdays, and 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays. Work requested beyond these hours and days will need to be approved by the Board of Public Works and Safety and relayed to the Public Works Director. G, drums and musical instruments. The use of any drum, musical instrument, or device for the purpose of attracting attention by creation of noise to any performance, exhibition, show, or sale, except in a parade or place for which a permit has been granted. H, megaphones. The use of a megaphone to cause disruption, anxiety, and cause panic is prohibited unless under the direction of a public safety official. 102.03, produced noises allowed. A, bells rang by church or religious institutions are permissible without time restrictions. B, noises produced by city-approved firework displays or approved public events are permissible until 12:00 a.m. or 1:00 a.m. on January 1st of each year. C, noises produced at school-sponsored events on school property are permissible up to 11:00 p.m. Non-commercial sound vehicles. 102.15 definitions. Sound amplifying equipment. Any machine or device for the amplification of the human voice, music, or any other sound, such term should not be construed as including standard automobile radios when used and heard only by occupants of the vehicle on which they are installed, or warning sirens, horns, or other devices, or authorized emergency vehicles, or horns, or other warning devices on other vehicles used only for traffic safety purposes. Sound truck. Any motor vehicle or other vehicle having mounted thereon or attached thereto any sound amplifying equipment or device. 102.20, commercial advertising prohibited. Except as otherwise provided in this chapter, no person shall operate or cause to be operated any vehicle for commercial advertising purposes at any time or place in the city with the sound amplifying equipment in operation. 102.99 penalty. Persons found guilty of this chapter shall be assessed a fine up to $500 for each occurrence, and any fee assessed by the court. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 102 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 102 of the Code of Ordinances and no other chapter. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect 30 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro temp, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Could you read that again?
Yeah. Was there someone in the public that, come on up?
Senator Richardson, 332 North 14th Avenue. First of all, I want to commend you for actually redoing this ordinance, or trying to, because the last time it was done was 1992. So I think that we don't need anything in there with steam whistles and locomotives anymore, so good job. I do have some concerns, however, I feel that it is very vague, and it leaves it up to a lot of discretion. So I would really like to see it be tabled at the moment and have some more details put in it. The old one is 10 pages long, and it details out what time noise, certain noises can begin, and what time it can end at night. Those are also outdated, because it says 6 o'clock at night, so I think now we're not even getting home to start mowing grass until 6 o'clock at night. But the new one gives no times whatsoever. In all of the chapters, it says, or all of the, it says unnecessary, unreasonable period of time. Who determines that? This police officer may determine it one way, another may another. I don't, I don't think that any one person, my neighbor may think it's unnecessary for me to have a radio in my backyard when I'm mowing grass. I may not. I, I think the whole thing needs to be re-looked at and a little bit more detailed. So that's, let me make sure I covered every, oh. Horns and signaling devices. According to the way this is written, you can't have a horn, no fire trucks, no ambulances, no, nobody can honk their horn. It says, in a parade, in any parade. So you might want to revise that. Again, on the radios, it says you cannot be sitting at a stoplight or stop sign with your radio going unless it's too loud. Who's going to determine that? If you're sitting there stopped and a policeman pulls up next to you, what might be allowed to one person might not be allowed to another. Summertime, windows down, is that really something? I just see some of this as a little nitpicky, some of it's not stated well enough. Down under, produce noises allowed. Noises produced by city-approved fireworks displays or approved public events are permissible until 12:00 a.m. or 1:00 a.m. on January 1st of each year. Does anybody see a problem with that? So we can't have July 3rd anymore, guys. So.
Why can't we, Carla?
Because it states on here that it's only allowed on January 1st of each year.
No, it, to me it reads, noises produced by city-approved firework displays or approved public events are permissible until 12:00 a.m. And then it, it further defines it and says, or 1:00 a.m. on January 1st of each year.
You mean New Year's Eve?
New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve, so they don't get started until midnight anyway, because that's when the New Year rings in.
So, okay, I apologize that I misunderstood that. Okay, so does that mean no fireworks at all by any individuals anywhere?
No, it, it says, it says noises produced by city-approved fireworks displays or approved public events are permissible.
So those are permissible, so nowhere in here does it talk about fireworks or what's allowed by citizens, and that is the one big question that comes up every year by everybody, is what time do fireworks have to stop? And nowhere in here is it covered, so you guys are going to be right back into that stupid question on Facebook from everybody every year, what time does it stop? And you guys are not giving the police any guidance, there's nothing in here for them to look at it and say, well, here's the law, it, it's 10 o'clock, or it's 11 o'clock.
It's addressed in a different ordinance, that's why.
For the fireworks, shouldn't that be in the noise ordinance as well?
It would be if it's in another section.
You, you know that, that ordinance number, Craig?
I don't have it on the top of my head, I think we, we passed it within the last few years, if I remember right. I think we passed it within the last few years, if I remember right. Either this council or the council before did.
I think it should also be stated in the noise ordinance. When somebody is looking up to see what time something can be done or not done, I think it would be smart. In your old one, it's all in here, it's all stated. I don't know that fireworks is, but everything else is spelled out. It gives decimals, it tells how many decimals something can be.
Decimals? Decimals.
Sound-amplifying equipment. It goes into great detail. I don't know that we need that great detail, but we need more detail than what we have in this ordinance, in my opinion. So, that's all. There's no point in rehashing it. That's my comments, and I would like to see it tabled until it can be written with a little bit more detail and more clarification for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
The time changes for residential property that she talked about, where there's not permits. It's hard, there used to be a time when you couldn't make a lot of noise, it's like after six p.m. Who's going to go up, if you're working on your house at seven o'clock at night, if you're doing something, who's going to come up and tell you to quit because you're making too much noise? That's why that was taken out. So, government shouldn't come, if you're cutting your yard at eight o'clock at night, government shouldn't come and say, turn off your lawnmower, you're making too much noise. That's why that was taken out.
I understand what you're saying, that makes sense, it sounds good, until somebody, a neighbor complains at seven o'clock at night, or eight o'clock at night, or ten o'clock at night, and then there are no guidelines for me to say, no, I'm in compliance, I am okay until this time. There's nothing about yet. And guess what? It's an automatic five hundred dollar fine. There's no tiers here on the fines, there's no warnings, nothing.
Yeah, it says up to, it could be, it could be a hundred dollars.
Right, so who's going to decide that?
Yeah, I mean, so, so in all laws, though, in all laws, officers have to use their discretion. What's resisting arrest in one, to one officer's eyes is different than another, beating everything else. So, I mean, it's officer discretion. If they've been there ten times in the last month, I imagine you're going to get five hundred dollars.
That's fine that now she's in here. They should get a warning.
You can't, you can't. But you can't prescribe every single situation that happens, that's what you're asking the council to deal on this ordinance. It's absurd.
I'd ask you to give more clarification, so that the citizens have more rights, and the police also have something to do with that.
Would you be, Carl, would you be willing to kind of look at this and decide what you think it should do, and send me that in an email?
Yes, I would.
All right, and then we'll look at it again. This is only second reading, so then we'll look at it again on third reading, and I'll talk to a couple of the councilors, see what we can come up with, and maybe we can insert some of those.
I was going to say that, being on second reading, there might not be no need to table, because we would be able to make, look at suggestions between now and then.
Right.
Hang on, I've got a gentleman wants to comment. Yes, hi. First of all, I'm Robert Ferguson, I live eighty-four South Tenth. I am not here in the capacity of IMPD, I'm just in this uniform because I have to leave here to go to work very soon.
I thought maybe we had a hostile takeover.
No, no. Did not, no merger here. I'd like to state some stuff about this noise ordinance. I did some research on it. There are some issues that I see with it, I think it needs to be rewritten. Some of it, it primarily deals with the penalties that are assessed. It does read up to five hundred dollars. There are other noise ordinance violations in other counties that they currently have. One county in particular, they list clearly what the violation structure is. It states in there that the first violation is basically, you're told, hey, turn it off, knock it off. Second violation is a hundred dollar fine within a twelve-month period. Next one, I believe, is two hundred dollar fine in a twelve-month period. Then it keeps going up from there. I think that this needs to be clearly spelled out to everybody, when they read it, they know what the expectations are. Because the way how vaguely written it is now, if I have a speaker on my wagon when I take my kids around the park, if somebody doesn't like the music I'm playing, or they say it's loud, I run the risk of, one, not being able to have a joyous occasion with my kids in the park and listen to music, but also I can run the risk of having a five hundred dollar fine if somebody doesn't like it. So I think, especially when it comes to the penalties, it needs to be written out. Probably the council should do some research on what other cities, how their noise ordinances are structured, and maybe look at that before they move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
It has been written into the, or read into the record on second reading, and I'll take a motion from the council.
I'm in motion to approve on second reading. I think we need to take some things into consideration, though.
There's a motion to approve on second reading only, and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on third reading at the next council meeting. General Ordinance Two, two thousand nineteen, is up for approval on second reading only, and that is one page, so Dan will have to read it in the record.
General Ordinance Number Two, two thousand nineteen, is an ordinance that amends Chapter seventy-seven of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove concerning intersection controls. Whereas Ash Street was recently paved and is opened up to more traffic, and whereas some residents have trouble backing out of their driveway to, to the increased traffic patterns. Whereas recently sidewalks have been added in the area of Sixth and Ash, causing an influx of pedestrian foot traffic, and whereas local residents have asked their council representative for help in reducing the rate of speed that cars use while driving Ash Street. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter seventy-seven of the Code of Ordinances concerning intersection controls. Therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires the following amendment be added into Chapter seventy-seven of the Code of Ordinances. Amend Chapter seventy-seven traffic schedules. Schedule two, through streets and stop streets. A, two, Churchman, two Thompson Road, two west boundary line, at the following intersection: Ash and Sixth. Controls description: three-way stop sign, southbound six, eastbound Ash, westbound Ash. Now therefore be affirmed that the common council desires to change the intersection controls at Six and Ash Street and no other streets. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter seventy-seven of the Code of Ordinances and no other ordinance. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect thirty days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. The General Ordinance Number Two, two thousand nineteen, is up for approval on second reading only. Motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on third and final reading at the April meeting. That concludes unfinished business. Under new business, we have one item, Beach Grove Police Department requesting storage building.
It'll be your new police station, or just a storage?
Just a storage.
Dear Council, I'm requesting that you appropriate eighty-one thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars and three cents to the police department's capital improvement account. The money is from the Indiana Department of Environmental Management's excess liability trust fund claim. This is the money that was paid in when we took out our gas tank. This money has been paid from the police department's budget for the last three years to pay for the testing that occurred for the underground gasoline tank that was removed. I plan using the money to build a storage building that can hold our excess equipment, and that will have room for future needs. I do not know how much this building would cost, I haven't even looked, without having the money there. It's in an account that if it's not used, it comes back to the city. And I'm just asking for the ability, but I have that money, and if I can have a storage building, all of you have seen our building, it's, the hallways are packed, everything is full, our garage is full, I have no storage, and I have two desks in our hallway for people to work at. Just asking for the ability to go out and look and see if I can build a building that our equipment can be stored in.
Where were you going to put it at, Mark?
The mayor suggested maybe city property. If I get this money, I'm going to go to my neighbor and see if he'd sell me that back area of his property that is just east of me.
East of the police station?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want, if he would sell it, just the back end of it.
Okay. Craig, does this take an amendment to the budget?
It's an appropriation.
No, no. It's already in an account you could spend tomorrow. This here was, I put it into an insurance reimbursement account with a appropriation where we can put it in there and spend out of it. So, this has already been done, it really didn't even have to come for the council, I don't think, but that's my opinion.
I'm just making you aware that the money has been refunded, and if I have the ability to build it, I'll come to you and tell you. This is where the money's coming from and what the building's for.
Well, I think it's a reasonable request, and you guys are under, so.
Mark, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Have you considered trying to get in a, find out how much it would cost to put a second story on the police station?
I've been told you can't add to it, it's not structurally made for a second story.
Actually, I remember, we talked about that a while back, and I think even, that was even attempted, brought up fifteen or twenty years ago.
Yeah.
When they said that it wouldn't work, at least. And that was a person that wanted to build one. And they still said it wouldn't go.
Is that the same for the building in the back of the parking lot?
Yeah, that one wasn't constructed for anything other than one story.
Who's using that building in the back now?
Fire department uses three-fourths of it, and we use a fourth of it.
Have you thought about evading them? Oh, I'm sorry, chief.
Yes, we have.
I'll make a motion to approve the building for the chief.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes new business. Council comments, beginning on my left. Bud?
Thank everybody for being here, and a lot of good comments that have come up that certainly make you think about things a little farther. I do want to make, of course, congratulations to the high school and the middle school, not just on their sports success, but just on many good things that have been brought up at the last few meetings. Leon Woffington, as the mayor, had a moment of silence, was just definitely, especially as a youngster, a big part of this community. And I just think it's a nice tribute that someone who's done as much as Leon Woffington, that his name get mentioned today, and that, you know, people can go away from here saying there was another person that contributed, you know, back in the day. And that's all I have.
Thank everybody for coming, and I'll put in my two cents again for the high school. Their game Saturday's at ten o'clock, it's a little way out in Greencastle, but it's, if you'd have seen the look on those boys' faces when they won that sectional, it was truly amazing. And they actually beat my old alma mater, and I was pulling for Beach Grove a hundred percent. It was a fun game, and I'm telling you, if you get a chance to go out and watch, there's a lot of people there. That's all I got.
Thanks for coming out, everybody. See you next month.
Yes, thanks, everybody, for being here. It was a lot of good, informative meetings, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark, room for addressing our concerns with the moose. Hope you're sincere when you say that, that the political environment didn't change your decision. You know, this country's so polarized right now, and it's, it's just terrible. I mean, we're all Americans. And I said when I sat here in this chair, the very first January that I took office, that I wasn't going to play politics, and I was going to try to, to advance the agenda of Beach Grove. Mayor Buckley is the elected mayor, and I've tried to, to do the best I could with, you know, within the constraints of being on this council. And I'd just like to say that, don't let us in Beach Grove sink to the national level where we're just nonstop fighting and hating each other. Let's, let's just, you know, run our campaigns, and run our city, and get along as best we can. And remember that we're neighbors.
Here, here.
That's all.
I just want to thank everybody for coming.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make said motion.
I'll second.
I'll second, Chris.
Meeting is adjourned at nine, twelve.